Folks, if I could have your attention, apologize for the little delay here. We had a few technical issues we had to get worked out. Before we get started here this morning, I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Kevin Jeffries, Chairman of the Oldham County Planning Commission. I'd like to welcome you to our Planning Commission meeting for October 22nd, or 27th. And before we get started, I would like to ask if you have a cellphone here to be, turn it off or turn it on vibrate so it doesn't interfere with the cameras here in the courtroom. Before we get started this morning, I would like to just have a moment of silence for Mary Ann Smith. Mary Ann passed away on October 17th, or 16th, I believe it was. She served on the Planning Commission here as a LaGrange appointee for six or seven years, I think. So, really fine lady. She also served on SRC Committee with several of us here on the commission. So, if you would, let's just have a moment of silence for her, please. With that, let's, if you would, join me for the Pledge of Allegiance before we get started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united, indivisible, infinite, and just as strong.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, before we get started here with our first docketed item, or I guess our only docketed item, I'd like to get the staff sworn in, please. Besides you.
You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do. Commissioners, the first item on our agenda here this morning is approval of the minutes from our September 22nd meeting. You have, if I could, I'd like to get a motion to approve with a second, and then we'll open it up for discussion or additions.
I'm going to approve the minutes as submitted.
Okay, and Ms. Davis seconds. Sam Finney moves to approve the minutes as submitted. Now, is there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Any additions or corrections? Seeing no hands go up, all those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted from our September 22nd meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Okay, minutes have been approved. All right, at this point, I will call on Ms. Haishu to introduce our first docketed item, please, or read her first docket.
Okay. So, we have docket 20-015. Application has been filed by Cody and Karina Brady for the approval of a minor plat with access easement waiver on approximately 7.08 acres. The property is located at 1021 Dunaway Lane, LaGrange. The zoning is AG1 agricultural and R2 residential.
Okay, thank you. And with that, Ms. Alvey, now we'll introduce the docket.
Just a second, we timed out on this machine while we're trying to get the other one.
Okay, is your microphone on?
Yes. I'm just not standing close to it. The first time anybody's ever accused me of being quiet. All right, good morning. Amy Alvey, I am the Assistant Director for Oldham County Planning and Development Services. As Ms. Haishu stated, this is an application for a minor plat with waiver on approximately 7.08 acres. The property is located at 1021 Dunaway Lane, and zoned R2 residential and AG1 agricultural. This is an aerial map that shows the existing property outlined in red. Our GIS lines are off a little bit. It will not let me draw on the screen, but the line actually goes to about right here. You can see the Moe line there. The current zoning is R2 and AG1. The front portion of the property is zoned R2, that's the subject area today, and the rear of the property is zoned AG1. On-site history, on October 24th of 1995, the Oldham County Planning Commission approved a lot creation via minor plat request by Mr. Graves with the condition that the access easement be limited to three households, and there be a maintenance agreement filed with the deed. And then on March 21st, 1996, the Oldham County Board of Adjustments approved a road frontage variance request by Mr. Graves for 300 feet for that 7.948 acre tract of land and use of the existing access easement. The conditions of approval placed on that tract is that it shall not be further divided. So, I think what happened was, is in 1995, they approved the minor plat and then realized it needed a road frontage variance, so then it came back to the Board of Adjustments in 96. So, this is the survey that was provided with that Board of Adjustments application. You'll see the subject tract that received the road frontage variance highlighted there in blue. So, this is the correlation between the minor plat and the aerial today. So, it's the rear tract here. On October 17th of 1996, the Oldham County Board of Adjustments approved a conditional use permit request from RD Dunaway for the placement of a manufactured home on that residual 9.9 acres. That was docket 2593. So, you'll see again, highlighted in red, the subject tract with a star where the location is of the manufactured home. On January 27th of 2000, the Oldham County Board of Adjustments approved a road frontage variance request from RD Dunaway for a creation of a lot with zero road frontage, yes, to utilize the existing 30-foot access easement. A condition of approval was placed on the tract stating that there will be a written maintenance agreement on the 30-foot access easement, and it will be recorded in the county clerk's office. So, they, at that point, they took the nine acres, again, it won't let me draw on the screen, they took the nine acres and then sold off two acres here, highlighted in green. This was the survey that was submitted with that application. In October of 2001, the access easement was officially named Dunaway Lane due to the three parcels using the access easement. You'll see this is a memo from Ethel Fox, who worked for Planning and Development, explaining that the new address points for those three tracks. On July 18th of 2002, the Oldham County Board of Adjustments denied a conditional use permit request from Mr. Dunaway for the construction of an additional residence. They wanted a parent suite on that same property with the manufactured home. The subject property is there, outlined in red, and that request was denied. And then finally, on January 28th of 2003, the Oldham County Planning Commission denied a minor plat with road frontage variance and joint access easement request. They were wanting to create this tract here, and that was denied. And you can see, oh, it's shifted, can't move it. This was the access easement here. So, today before you, the applicant is proposing to create a two-acre tract off Dunaway Lane, which would be the fourth tract to utilize the existing access easement. A portion of the proposed property is to be divided, is zoned R2, which does not require road frontage, it only requires lot width. So, there's no road frontage variance before you today, it's only the minor plat with the waiver of the access easement. So, you'll see, this is the proposed tract here. Per Section 5.7E, no more than three parcels may take access from any single street encroachment not considered a frontage street or private roadway. The applicant is requesting a waiver to allow the following tracks to use the existing access easement, which does not have a recorded access or maintenance agreement. So, these are the four tracks. So, there's the existing tract in the rear, the property that the applicant is here today on, the proposed tract here would be three, and the existing tract here, which is four. The applicant plans to place a home on the proposed tract so they can live closer to their father-in-law, to assist in his care. The father-in-law lives at 1021 Dunaway Lane. According to the applicant's justification statement, states the following, "The existing tract has no road frontage, so any division would have to use the access easement, and the traffic level will remain the same and should not pose any disruption to the neighbors." This is a view from Dawkins Road looking into the entrance of Dunaway Lane. This is the south adjoining, so this, the access easement, the access easement runs along their property line and then traverses through their, the back, because this is a long, narrow, 10-acre tract here. So, it traverses this way, turns, and then goes back. So, this is the southeast adjoining. This is the north view on Dawkins. This is the south view on Dawkins. This is the west view from Dawkins at the intersection of Dunaway Lane. Again, this is Dunaway Lane going back into the property. This is 1011 Dunaway Lane, so this is the, highlighted here in green, but it's at this turn here, where you come up and turn, this is looking into this tract here. This is the proposed lot area. This is 1021 Dunaway Lane. This is just a closer picture of 1021 Dunaway Lane. This is 1031 Dunaway Lane, so this is the very rear tract. This is exiting from 1031 Dunaway Lane. And again, this is back towards the front, this is Dawkins Road here. Just another view. So, in summary, the applicant is requesting approval of a waiver of a joint access, Section 5.7, and a minor plat. That is all that I have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All righty, Ms. Alvey, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? Mr. Solomon, do you have anything that you need to add to this docket?
Sorry about that, urgent matters. No, I was just here to let you know that from my observations, this doesn't have any relevant issues concerning the Engineering Department.
Okay, all right. Now, Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff on this docket? Mr. Douglas?
Amy.
Yes, sir.
Did you say that in 2000, there was supposed to be a written maintenance agreement on a 30-foot access?
Correct.
Was it recorded?
No. I could not locate a recorded access and maintenance agreement for Dunaway Lane.
Is it, the Planning Department's supposed to follow up on that, or is it just up to the?
They normally are, I can tell with the current, what we currently do is that when there is an access easement requirement, access and maintenance agreement document, that has to be submitted before we release the minor plat to be stamped. And then, we have a process that, with our new permitting software, I go back and have to put in the D-book and page number to close out the project, and then we would check at that point to ensure that the access easement was recorded with the minor plat. If the minor plat has been recorded and it's, the agreement has not been recorded with the plat, then we would notify the owner.
So, apparently, the minor plat was recorded without and released.
Was recorded without, yes, sir. Correct.
And then, the follow-up was that previously, I guess in 2002, there was, the County Board of Adjustments denied a conditional use permit for RD Dunaway for a construction of additional residential structure. Was that an accessory building?
We would call that today an accessory dwelling unit, a mother-in-law suite, basically. Yes, sir.
And what was the amount of acreage for that?
It had nine acres at that, uh, let me get back to my, let's see, so that was in 96, it was nine acres, 2007 acres, so it was still the seven acres of the same size it is today.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, any additional questions for staff? Mr. Clingin Fuse.
There's a provision, I believe, on, like, mother-in-law houses on the same lot, if it's over two acres, would this property qualify for that? And how does a road?
They can, but what it is, is the size is limited to 25, the maximum size is 25% of the primary structure's square footage. So, that may be a question to ask the applicant of whether that size of home would be adequate for them.
Okay. What about how, on, does that change, like, if there's, just curious, if there's three, already three lots, does that affect the road capacity on that, if there's?
No, because it's based off the number of tracks. The regulation says number of tracks, not the number of homes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any additional questions? Let's see, I got two hands down here, Mr. Alvey, and then Mr. King.
Amy.
Yes, sir.
Would this not be the time to get that maintenance agreement in effect?
If it was approved today, we would not release the minor, they would have to submit with the minor plat application, a access and maintenance agreement.
Before they could get the approval.
Correct.
Okay, Mr. King.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Amy. There we go, we're on now. Question about the comments from LaGrange Fire and Rescue. LaGrange Fire and Rescue says the department has a current, that current has a class rating of 4 ISO on this property. Can you tell me what that means?
That's the insurance rating. There was a comment in one of the previous cases from the fire department that had stated that they requested a fire hydrant when it was, I went the wrong way, when this tract here was created, or was requesting to be created, and it was denied by the Planning Commission. One of the comments from LaGrange Fire at that time in 2003 was that they suggested putting a fire hydrant in to be able to have adequate fire protection for the divisions. When the applicants came in, I suggested to them that they needed to contact the fire department to ensure that they could still provide adequate fire protection service. That's why there's a follow-up letter from LaGrange Fire, saying that they can adequately protect the tracks as proposed, that additional tract, without requiring the installation of an additional fire hydrant.
Thank you.
All right, any additional questions for staff? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Douglas, yes, go ahead.
So, did I miss something, Amy, when you said that Class 4 ISO rating just means, again, they can?
That's just the insurance rating, correct.
I don't see anything, it just says, they, calls for services, location will be provided by LaGrange Fire and Rescue. It doesn't say that there's adequate water there.
Well, they, which had to put on.
I know, you're on that.
Again, the reason was, and I can go through the file and get it, is that the previous chief at the time in 2003 felt that there should be a fire hydrant placed. The current letter from our major, Keith Smith, went out and did an inspection and doesn't feel that there is a need, and that the ISO rating is the location of structures to the closest fire hydrant, and that's really just an insurance rating, but didn't see any issues with being able to provide adequate fire protection to it.
Okay, thanks. That was the second letter that we, that you received?
Yes, that's the letter that, that was provided with the application by the applicant, correct. The other one was an old letter from 2003, from 17 years ago.
Okay. All right, any additional questions for staff, from Ms. Alvey? All right, seeing none, we'll now move into the presentation by the applicant or representatives and others in support of the application. So, whoever would like to speak on behalf of this application, come forward, we'll get you sworn in. If we could get your name and address, and then we'll get you sworn in here. You can take your mask down while you're up there.
I'm Cody Brady, and live at 1021 Dunaway Lane, LaGrange.
Okay. And if you would, Ms. Haishu, let's swear him in.
You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Okay. Well, you can proceed with your presentation, sir.
We live at 1021 Dunaway Lane with my father. He's had some health issues in the past, and we're just trying to see if we can get approved to build a house up in our front field right there. I don't have a copy with me, but I believe when we signed the paperwork for the house, the deeds, I guess, there was a maintenance, some maintenance thing in there for the road. I don't know where, I don't have a cop, like I said, I don't have a copy of that. But we usually all just try and pitch in to help fix the road and stuff like that.
You have anything else that you'd like to add to your request?
Not really.
Okay. All right, is there anyone else here that would like to speak in support of the application? Yes, ma'am? We'll get you to come forward and, and get your name and address, and get you sworn in also.
Hi, yes, my name is Karina Brady. My husband is Cody. I'm a little bit more talkative, so I'm gonna go on our behalf. So, yes, back in 2013.
Oh, wait just a minute, let me get you sworn in.
Oh, okay, yes.
Ms. Haishu.
You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, back in 2013, my father-in-law, John Brady, he had purchased this land, and then, I think it was last year, that he had a massive heart attack. So, of course, you know, you gotta take care of your parents, so we are, we've been staying at the address, and we've been, you know, helping with that since he had that surgery, a quadruple heart bypass. So, we've been staying there, helped taking care of the land, and, you know, making sure everything is good, and making sure everything is kept down and maintained, and, and things like that. And also, I don't know if you noticed, we have a little boy, so, he was a little vocal earlier, but that's a lot of people in one house, but we would like to still assist with taking care of his father, my father-in-law. So, that's why we are proposing to be in the front field, which right now, it's just wide open, you know, grass and, and in the field. So, it's why we are proposing to be there, to still maintain, you know, the close proximity, so that way, we can still take care of the property and assist with whatever care he may need, with his doctor's appointments and things of that nature.
Okay. All right, is that complete your presentation, or your all's presentation?
Also, like Amy had said about the fire issue with the fire hydrant, I did speak with Mr. Smith myself, he was, and he went over, you know, he said he would vouch for us. He said there was no issues today with, you know, adding an extra tract. He said, you know, he could support up to a Level 4 fire, which I guess is a really bad house fire, but he said that he would be able to support that, and there wouldn't be any issues with any hydrants, or lack of hydrants thereof. And another thing was, all of our neighbors that we would share the easement with, the proposed access easement, they have no concerns or issues. As far as we know, we've discussed that with them, and we have a pretty neighborly relationship with them as well. And as my husband had stated, as far as like, maintenance goes, we all, you know, make sure that everything is taken care of, as far as like, the gravel, and making sure everything is graded and everything, and keeping everything to look nice, as far as like, the grass around the driveway, or the lane, rather. So, I don't know if that's what you guys mean by maintenance, but we do all pitch in as a neighborly community as well.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No, no, that was all. Thank you for your time.
We'll have some questions here in just a little bit, so, is there anyone else here that would like to speak in support of this application? Okay. All right, we'll now move into testimony and questions by those opposing the application. Ms. Alvey, I believe we received a letter yesterday from maybe one person or a family that had some concerns. If you would put that up on the screen, please. Commissioners, I think we all received that last night. Ms. Alvey had forwarded it to us, you know, for, for us to look at, so, that's the letter that we had received, I guess, yesterday. Sally, I assume that's the only letter that we received on this docket? Okay?
Correct. This person was out of town on fall break, so, they called yesterday.
All right, is there anyone here that would like to testify, have testimony or questions opposing the application? Anyone here opposing the application? Okay, seeing none, we'll now open it up for the Commissioners to ask questions of the applicant. Are there any questions from the Commissioners to the applicant? Any questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Alvey?
Yes, that letter, that is a neighbor, isn't it, that is living on the easement himself?
Correct. It is, it's this, it won't let me draw on the screen today, but it's the rear track, it's the 1031, it's this tract here.
Okay, so, my question then is, in her letter, she says it's not equal in the expense the way the maintenance is being taken care of, I guess. Do you have plans, so that if you do this maintenance agreement, everybody shares in it equally, or?
We'll get you, get you back up to the microphone, please, so we can record that.
Hi, yes, so, we do have a plan, that we were gonna have the regravelled. We did get the little nasty letter from the post office as well. I don't know if you guys have driven out there, but it's got a little bit at, past our driveway, it does have a little bit of a hill. Unfortunately, 1031 is at the bottom of that hill, so whenever it does have a big rain, whenever we do have a big rain, the water does have to go somewhere, so it does go down there. However, usually, Ms. Tracy Roberts, or Mrs. Tracy Roberts, her husband, and he has a, I think it's a skid steer or a tractor, he usually pushes up the rock after storms and things like that, and then we also take our skid steer as well, and continue with the ditches that start after 1011, when it starts to kind of go down a little bit of the hill and there's some ditches. But yes, we do, we would love to get the road regravelled. That's something that we constantly talk about, and we've also told this family at 1031, whenever they would love to go in again with 1011, we would like to as well. I know that they, I think 1011, I think, the husband that works, or lives there, I believe he gets a discount through someone, so unfortunately, after it was regravelled the most recent time, that's when, you know, we had went to the neighbor, we were like, "Oh, we noticed the road was regravelled," and they were like, "Yeah, we went in with 1011." It was after the fact that we realized, so we've already notified them that next time we will absolutely go in with you guys, because 1011, 1021, and 1031, we all share that road. So, that's something that we advised the neighbor, that we would love to be involved with that, because, one, we've already checked in the cost ourselves, just to regravel our area, that leads to 1031, and we've checked into the cost, and, which is, I mean, it's not too bad, but we were just kind of waiting for, before winter time, so that way, the rain and everything has passed, but either way, after it was recently regravelled. the rain and everything has passed, but either way, um, after it was recently regravelled, it was after the fact that, that they advised us that they had paid to get it done, so it was kind of, um, we didn't have a chance to get involved with that, but we did advise 1031, um, I, I don't know if it was Tracy, I believe it might have been her husband, that, um, he was up on the tractor, that we did advise him that we would absolutely love to go in next time. It's, it shouldn't just have been their expense, so, but unfortunately, it was after the fact that we were notified last time, so we weren't able to go in on three, three ways that day.
So does this maintenance agreement that you all have developed, does it show that, uh, everybody pays their equal share?
Uh, you mean if we, like a proposed one that we would? Well, um, yeah, we're just from when we've had small talk with, you know, 1031, um, because they're, if you see their, their house is a little bit closer, I mean, our mailboxes, if you saw their blue one and our black mailbox, they're right by each other, so sometimes, you know, when we're checking the mail, they're right there, um, so we've had more small talk with them, more, um, but, you know, we've always talked about, you know, having the road properly gravelled, so that's, I'm always going in thirds, you know, with 1011, but, um, I mean, what we talk about in small talk with our neighbors, that's what we would propose to do, I mean, it would be equally, um, if 1011 doesn't feel like they need to come all the way back because honestly, they're not, they don't have that much to share with us, it's just like that small little bit in front of their property in their front yard, um, but if 1031 wants to do that with us as well, then yes, we would do that fairly. I know that usually they've, Ms. Roberts, they've paid, their family has paid 1011, I think, this most recent time, they just gave them the money for their half, uh, so, I mean, whatever works, I mean, we're easygoing, we've lived here almost eight, well, it's been seven years, um, so whatever works, I mean, we're, we're up for whatever's fair and equal to our neighbors as well. Um, as far as the angry neighbors, that was suggested, um, they, I mean, they've never had any issues with us, we're not angry people. I, I don't know if that's maybe the, you know, some other families before we had moved in there or maybe the previous tenant, I don't, I don't know, but, um, I absolutely understand what she's talking about, especially their children, they get off at the end of the road, you know, and they have to walk down the lane from school, so I get that, you wanna make sure your kids are in a good community, as would I, so, um, but yeah, as far as angry neighbors, I'm, I'm not sure about that, but the maintenance thing that you did inquire about, that, of course, that would be fairly, and I'd, I'd propose that as well if you guys need that.
Ms. Alvey, is that all that you had? Okay, uh, let me ask, uh, Mr. Urban, is that, or Mr. Tate, uh, Combs, uh, is there, you know, can a maintenance agreement be, uh, added to this at this point or how would, how would that work, you know, to have this in writing?
Well, if you choose to approve the waiver, it would be one of the binding elements or conditions of approval that are proposed.
Okay.
They would have to draw one up and, as Amy mentioned earlier, when they do the minor plat, they would have to include that, so it could be recorded at the same time as a minor plat.
Mr. Combs, is that, is that, uh?
I used it the other day at fiscal court. First of all, from what I've seen or basically read, there should already be a written, uh, maintenance agreement for this section of these three, at least the prior three people there, that I would have thought had already been prepared and, and, and of, of record. Setting out the responsibility of all three of those existing tracks sharing equally a third, a third, a third, and with some annual contribution or, or, or a plan of how they would, uh, collect the funds and, and, and meet to make a decision on regraveling or repaving. Evidently, that hasn't been done, it's, it's right now, it's just an oral deal and from what I see, it should have been a written agreement a long time ago. So going forward, yes, uh, Ms. Urban's, Urban's correct, they need a written agreement regarding this maintenance and that's always been an issue that has been mandated by not only the Board of Adjustments, but I'm sure Planning and Zoning Board here, so that's about the only thing I can say, that, that is critical, critical in the decision-making that's before you today, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Combs, I, yeah, I, as chairman, you know, I think we need to make sure that, that everything's in writing, I mean, you know, you can say, you know, in, in verbally or whatever, you agree to it and whatever, but I think we need to have something in writing, you know, that, that we can, can file, you know, with the approval and whatever, so.
Absolutely agree.
The purpose of these agreements should be recorded and run with the land so that when someone, one of these properties is gonna be sold in the future, that individual that buys is gonna be subject to those same terms and conditions and, and, and that's the, that's the importance of it as far as it, recording and having it run with, with each track.
Okay. All right, um, at this point, is there any other questions from the commissioners to the applicant? Yes, sir, Mr. Douglas?
Ms. Brady, can you tell me, give me a background of when I heard that your father-in-law purchased the land in 2013? Is that a yes?
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry, yes, he did purchase it, um, in 2013.
And do you know how long your neighbors have been there? I mean, the one at, I guess, at 1031?
I know she, I know the Roberts have been there for quite some time, um, I think, maybe now, I think it may be almost 20 years, um, but yes, we purchased it in 2013 before it was originally purchased by R.D. Dunaway, um, which, I mean, he passed away, so that's, that's how we came upon this property.
Okay, well, my, I guess my next question would be is that you mentioned that y- your family have, had considered, if you were asked, to go in partly with the maintenance of the road. It bothers me though that even though they went on and did it, after the fact, even though you didn't offer to pay them what they've already placed in the road, unless they didn't do anything alongside your front, frontage area.
Uh, it was more so, was, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to-
No, go ahead.
It was more so, um, in front of 1011 and, um, like right there, I believe, is where it was more so, um, at, and, um, maybe a little bit in front of the proposed area, but, um, like I said, it was after the fact, but even then, we did offer and it was, oh, it's already, you know, it's already been taken care of, and so that's when we were like, ah, next time, definitely let us know, um, and, I mean, that's, that's all we could do at the time, but, I mean, as we usually do is after a big storm, we always, we try to take our skid steer as well as the other neighbors, you know, on the other side of Dunaway Lane, um, a lot of us have skid steers, so we take that and we regrade the road. Whether or not we purchased, you know, went in on the gravel, we do try to help cover the ditches after a storm. Um, 1011, they have a, a smaller skid steer, um, sometimes I see them doing it as well and sometimes we do it, and then 1031 sometimes still do it, you know, so, um-
You, you mentioned the letter from the postal, post office?
Yeah, it was the same time that they received one, I believe it was in the summer after we had some, some, some showers, um, and it was about, um, where after the rain kinda comes through and it goes down that hill there at 1031, uh, right by where our mailboxes are, so those were regraded, but it was after a storm unfortunately, but that's-
Is there anyone here that can say that road now needs maintenance to it? If, if, if this commission decided whatever route they take, because there will be, I'm sure, construction trucks coming in to, you know, construct our home, so-
Right.
What do you guys have in mind to maintain those roads, that road?
A temporary fix, of course, is to regravel, um, you know, and then over time after that washes out, you gotta regravel again, um, so that's something that we've talked about with them. Eventually, the big plan is for our neighbor and I, or the neighbors behind us as well, is eventually we would like to have it not gravelled, um, but paved, eventually, that would be the nice thing to do instead of just putting a Band-Aid on something that's just gonna keep bleeding, you know, with gravel, but, um, that's eventually what we would like to do. And with our driveway, um, when we do have our home built and put up, we would like to also have a paved area instead of having to constantly pay for gravel or, you know, use machinery that we also pay for to maintain the drive, um, the driveway and regravel it and grade it and everything like that, so that is what we would like to do and we've talked about that as well with 1031 paving it, but, um, sometimes that's a little bit more expensive, so you kinda have to put the cheap fix on top of it such as, as gravel, but, um, I completely understand the maintenance plan that you guys would like, um, written instead of just, you know, small talk at the mailbox, so I do understand that and that's absolutely something I completely agree with. I can't stress enough how, how, um, how much we would like to go in as neighbors and, um, that's something that we talked about with them, so, um, that's just something that I, I can say to you today and that's just, that's what we would like to do, we just haven't had a chance to do it yet.
Well, let me, uh, let me ask, as chairman, are, are you all willing to agree to a binding element, uh, if this were approved today, that you all would, would, uh, work and get a, a written document created and signed, uh, before this would be approved?
Absolutely, um, I could, we could definitely do that, if, do, is that something you need notarized as well?
It would have to be in writing, it would have to be, you know-
Notarized.
-agreed to by the, all the parties involved-
Yeah.
-and then it would be before, before the office could issue, uh, you know, would sign off on this, it would have to be agreed to and, and a legal document created so it could be filed, you know, with the, uh, with the courthouse.
Yeah, that's absolutely something that I, um, can definitely do for you guys and I can speak with 1011 and 1031, um, I'm sure they will be perfectly fine with it, um, you know, instead of having something just, you know, talked about, then we have it in writing, I'm sure that, that that would be fine, um, we could absolutely do that for you guys, and, I mean, it's not just the cost of, of the gravel, of course, you know, but it's also the wear and tear on your vehicles going over all these ditches and things like that, so we absolutely understand, it's not just our vehicles, it's others as well, so it's-
You understand that, that would be a legal document that would have to be drafted, you know, by an attorney and at, at your cost-
Okay.
-and then, you know, it would have to be filed, you know, and before, you know, the staff could, could sign off and, and approve this if the commission decides to, to move forward with that.
Absolutely, I can do that.
I did see, uh, one lady back here had her hand up, would like to speak, if, if you wanna come forward, we'll get your name and, and then get you sworn in also, so, thank you, Ms. Brady.
Hi, my name's Carolyn Brady.
You can take the mask down if you want to.
My name's Carolyn Brady and, uh, I'm the stepmother and-
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to confirm what Kayla has been, or Karina has been saying, and I too have talked to the neighbors and went to them and let them know because they have purchased gravel without telling us. So I went to them and told them that we wanted to participate in the maintaining of the road, and we have taken our own gravel with the tractor and taken it and filled in holes, and like she has said, it kinda, the road kinda comes downhill, so you can see when it pours down rain that it gets rutted, okay? So then we take the skid steer and things and we even that out and go back over it and depends on how much rain, but, um, the neighbor below us, he has a worse driveway than we do because it goes downhill even further, so he's had to maintain his, not so much ours, but, um, the neighbors pretty much on both sides kinda maintain in front of their houses. And then, uh, ours is just a, a, maybe a, a hole here or a hole there that kinda develops and we take rock and put in there and fill that in and kinda smooth it out so that it's a lot better than, uh, what it has been in the past, so.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner, Mr. King, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, so, just trying to get my mind around what the parties to an agreement might come up with, and I think when we look at it, we find something simple on the surface that really isn't. Um, and, and so the commitment level is, is, is really highly contingent upon the ability to strike this agreement, so let me give you an example if I can, real quick, just assume everybody has on their property an equal share in terms of distance and width of this road, all right? If I'm the guy at the front of the, of the line here, I've got the curb cut and that road is a half a mile, I'm going to commit to maintaining what's on my property, but I'm not gonna commit to the rest of the road, I'm not using that. So that changes the calculus, right? That's not a 25% allocation this person's looking at in terms of the cost of maintaining this road, and the agreement, I think, needs to incorporate these kinds of things, the person at the end is using the whole road all the time, the second and thirds and partial portions as well, so our allocations, if I look at it and say, oh, we're just gonna allocate it evenly, that doesn't work logically in my mind, that's not a fair allocation, especially for the owner of the curb cut. So I think that we have, uh, as a consideration here, depending on how far you're willing to commit, it's highly contingent on striking this agreement first, is what I see. We have the added adventure of this, right, so there's, the, the metrics are, I can, I can measure the cost of gravel that's delivered, I really can't measure well the cost of using my own equipment to maintain this piece of property as needed and how to measure that and how to incorporate that into an agreement, so it gets very sticky, it gets very messy, um, a- and, and I hesitate to make a full commitment until we see that there is an agreement cast for incorporating this use.
Mr. Combs, let me, uh, call on you again to, can you maybe clarify or, you know, respond to his concerns?
Well, I think they're valid, I mean, that's the problem at this point, you know, I understand that the guy in the back may not, he uses it every day, the, the whole thing, and the guy in the front doesn't, and the two in the middle have another issue it, and, and, uh, at this point, uh, if one could assume all tracks were equal in, in frontage along that access road, be easy matter to say, all right, it would be, everybody allocate, uh, a third or a fourth and have an annual dues, it's like a sub, it basically is a subdivision that has the rules and regulations on maintenance and, and how you go about it, and, um, and so that's what they've gotta come up with is, is a formula that will adequately provide for typically at least if no, i- if not new rock, at least grading the old rock in, in maintenance, but some kind of a, some kind of a, an annual dues that's enforceable, and it becomes enforceable when every member on that road signs and acknowledges that these are restrictions that go with the land and if you sell your property, whoever buys it is subject to those same restrictions down the road, and that hasn't been done yet, and that, it gets more difficult because you're adding another track and you've got more people involved, it should have been done a long time ago, it wasn't evidently, but that's the issue, and, and it needs to be done because otherwise you would have missed.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Gray, uh, Mr. King, is that all of your-
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, I'll, I'll get to you in a second, Ms. Alvey, uh, Mr. Douglas, this is the questioning portion.
Correct. I, I guess my concern is to you, Ms. Brady, and, and to the Brady family, is that there at one time, there was a written agreement, and although the ball might have been dropped by the planning directors or office or, or wherever, I don't know who dropped the ball, but you had a written agreement about the maintenance and you acknowledged already that there was one when he purchased the property. So, because I understood that Mr. Brady, the son, had indicated that was with the deed, that there was transferred to him about the written maintenance agreement. I, I, I just believe that we put the cart before the horse, and I'm not sure, you didn't come in here with a written agreement that you're asking for us to consider that all the homeowners would abide by. We could attach that to a binding element, but we don't know if the other homeowners have, have concluded that. So, go ahead.
We have a different, uh, permitting software than we did back in '02 or whenever, so as these binding elements, as Amy explained earlier, when the binding elements come in, before we can approve a minor plat, if you so choose- before we can approve a minor plat, if you so choose to grant the waiver, they would have to have that agreement in place. If you feel more comfortable that you want to see it before you approve it, that's, that's a question, but typically you don't. Anytime that we do maintenance agreements, whether it's board of adjustments or whatever, you don't see those agreements. They have to be drawn up. Now, and again, in this case, you can choose that you prefer to see it since it hadn't been done, but that's, that's again, typically it's, maintenance agreement is drawn up at the time of, after a binding element is placed on a docketed item and, and then we make sure it gets recorded.
I, I understand that and I think we've had a few cases like that, but we had, maybe not a majority, but we did have a few of the neighbors present that were in agreement to the written agreement here that were testifying either in opposition or in agreement for it. I, I don't see, I mean, although we're only talking about three neighbors, we have one that's said they're concerned. So, that's just, I don't know where to go.
Okay. All right. Uh, Mr. Brady, did you have, do you want to testify? Okay, I'll get you to come forward and get your name and address and then we'll get you sworn in also, please.
John Brady, 10-21 W L A.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay. Mr. Brady, go ahead.
Yeah, the, um, the people that stay down below us, they got five vehicles that run up down that road every day. And his concern about the road, a lot of times we pay him, he's taking his tractor with a box plate on there and scooping like the gravel like around the, the mailbox and dragging that down towards his property. So, if it rains, all that stuff washes down the hill. Now, he's, he's said to that and he complains about it. Basically, the rest of it, he don't take care of. Now, the one that stands on top of the hill there, uh, you know, huh, 10-11, um, he ran in and brought some, that black gravel that, um, question run stuff, um, old asphalt and, and did a section, did, um, that makes the corner go straight to his property. And, um, basically, when they put that stuff down, that stuff was garbage. It had big boulders and everything in it. So, but if a lot of times if something's wrong with the road, we take our equipment and we fix it. Because one side of, you know, it comes down to go in our driveway, was washed out a bit and I took gravel that I had and put and fixed that, you know? But that's it.
Okay. Well, and I-
And I never saw, when I purchased it, I never saw a written agreement saying about who's in for the road. They was all supposed to go in together. And I, nobody ever approached me about nothing.
Okay. All right. Mr. Alvey, do you have a question, sir?
Searl question. Is this, can I ask that now?
Sure, sure.
With advice from counsel and comments from Mr. King, are we putting the cart before the horse? Shouldn't we, since that maintenance agreement was supposed to be here already, I mean, or years ago, it's not, are we able to vote on something like that? Even putting it in a binding element, that, I don't know if that does it, if you're following my reasoning.
Okay.
Or should we have that written agreement first?
The minor plat to create the track cannot be approved by staff unless we have an agreement that's been signed by all the people using the access easement. So, if they don't get all the signatures on the access easement, the minor plat cannot be approved.
So, I think that's the safety valve here.
Correct.
Is that, you know, that if we, if they can't get all parties involved and, and, you know, drafting this document and get it signed by everybody that's on that road, then they can't get it signed. They can't get it approved. Uh, the staff will not approve it. So, I think that's kind of the safety valve, Mr. Combs. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Without that, without everybody being subject to it, nobody's subject to it except for, for one parent we're talking about today. So, I agree with Amy. The safety valve is the fact that they cannot come in with a written document, written agreement that had been signed and approved by all parties, husbands and wives on that, on, on that road, um, to become a permanent, uh, document that's going to be recorded along with the minor plat and everybody's subject to it and future owners are subject to it. Uh, and without that, staff will not approve the minor plat. So, you go forward and vote accordingly with that, with that caveat.
Right, okay. All right. Uh, Mr. King, hold on. Uh, Mr. Finney had a question, I think.
Thank you.
I think mine is coming more now, is, now, is a comment. And this is kind of, this is why we have zoning regulations is because-
Well, if you would, let, let's kind of wait till we get a motion or whatever, you know, and, and discussion at that point. This is more questioning for the applicant at the, you know, right now.
Okay. Then my other question, my question would be then, under a construction scenario, in other words, if the thing gets approved and get a construction, should they be required to be bonded for repairing the, the road up to the point that the construction equipment destroys the road?
Let me ask Mr. Combs, is this-
Concrete trucks, in other words, that'll be extra over and above a standard, um, maintenance.
Right. Uh, Mr. Combs?
If it's a county road division, that's different than- Than the private road. It's basically a private road, isn't it? And, and, and they can-
It, it's not even classified as a private road. It's an access easement. So, we can't require them to bond an access easement. That would be an agreement that they would have to have with their, with the neighbors that use that driveway. And again, this was all created prior to them purchasing the property. So, this wasn't at fault of theirs for not filing an access easement. They purchased the property with the access already there and the tract already there. So, they wouldn't have been on their checkoff list to create an access easement. It's on their list now because they want to create a new track, but it's not, wasn't on them previously when they, when Mr. Brady purchased the property. It wasn't his responsibility to create an access easement and maintenance agreement. He bought it as is.
But it, but, okay, understanding that, but if you are using an access that is, that is, that is an access for other persons-
Mm-hmm.
And you are, um, being a detriment to that access for your personal gain of building a home, should not you be responsible for bringing that access back to the condition it was before that?
Again, that would have to be an agreement that they would have to have.
Correct, yes.
And they could put that in the new one, that during the construction of the new home-
Right, okay.
Any repairs will be assumed 100% by-
Understood.
Them. But that could all be worked out in that access agreement. But again, all parties have to agree and sign to it before we can create the plat.
Before I go to Mr. King. And Ms. Brady, do you have something to add?
Uh, yes. Well, it was back when, uh, Mr. King had said that first statement about, um, you know, if you have just like a foot of the gravel road in front of your yard and someone's got like half a mile, but you're going to go in thirds. I absolutely agree with that. Um, and that's absolutely something that we would put in that, um, that agreement. You know, of course, as Amy stated, you know, that's something between us and the neighbors. That'll be in the letter, you know, in the, in whatever you need, that will be in there. You know, if 10-11 says, well, I'm only going to pay 25% and, you know, uh, or 10%, whatever, then that's obviously if we've got half a mile in front of ours, we shouldn't just have to pay for 25%. It should be a little bit more if we've got more in front of us. So, I understand what you're saying. You know, it goes back down to the fairness of the agreement. So, which goes back down to the communication between the neighbors on this, on the arrangement that would be sent over to Amy for you guys to view.
But now, you, you know, you have to understand, if, if the commission decides to approve this or grant this request, you know, that this, you know, it will not, you can't go in there and start building a home or whatever. You've got to get this agreement done. It has to be signed off by everybody that's affected there. And so, it's not going to be a, a quick process. I mean, you're not going to be able to start building a home until all of that is, is done and filed, you know, with the planning, with the, the staff and the commission or whatever before that will be approved. So, you know, you have to understand if, and, you know, we haven't got to that point yet whether we're going to approve this or not, but if the commission decides to do that, uh, you know, and, and they want to put a binding element on there that you have to get this document created, you know, you have to get it created, then you have to get everybody to sign off on it, you know, and, and as our counsel points out, you know, husbands, wives, you know, everybody has to agree. If they don't, then it won't be approved.
Right. Yes, I, I understand, you know, all the parties involved, um, it has to be filled out. And, you know, of course, I understand tomorrow, we're not going to put a house up, but, um, everything's contingent on, on what happens today. So, um, we, we're patient, we understand. So, we understand, you know, and nothing's happened overnight. So, um, we, we do understand that as well. And I understand everything's binding after I speak with an attorney, have signatures from hus, you know, spouses and, and all the, you know, grown residents, yeah.
Okay. Mr. King?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, uh, from Mr. Combs. Uh, Mr. Combs, I'm just looking for a sense of the, the legal framework that causes this type of agreement to be binding with the land, to run with the land without separation from the land regardless of owner. What's the, what's our terminology for this? Is it a deed restriction? Is it something along those lines? What's the reference that I'm looking for here?
It's a, it's just a road maintenance agreement. That's what it is. And it's a legal document that's drafted by all the parties that are involved on that access road to approve among themselves the conditions necessary to maintain that road, uh, in a satisfactory manner. And that's up to them. And, and this applicant may be in, in not the best negotiating position right now because this has been going on too long without, without agreement. So, there's already some disagreement, but they, they still have to be able to negotiate and put those conditions in a, in a, in a legal document that will be, should be drafted by an attorney. Uh, like, uh, and it's basically nothing more than, than, than a deed restriction that will become subject to, uh, future, uh, individuals that buy a property there. But it's a road maintenance agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Hampton?
Just as a, another option, would it be possible, I'm just not comfortable the way it is right now. It seems too muddled. Uh, I agree with counsel and, and, uh, Mr. King. Could we table this and then come back after they do this instead of the cart for, for the horse thing that everybody's brought up? I agree with. Is that a possibility?
Possibility, yes. Absolutely, it's a possibility. I mean, we've already advised you that you can go forward with the restrictions placed on, um, on the road maintenance agreement being, uh, drafted and approved by staff before the minor plat can be approved. And until that takes place, nothing's going to happen. Uh, or you can table it and it might be to their advantage, uh, the applicant's advantage to, to have it table so they can meet with everybody and see if it's going to be feasible in the first place, that they can come to some terms.
It just seems like that might be a cleaner option to me.
That's, those are options. So, you can go either way, whatever yours preference is.
Uh, Ms. Alvey, let me, let me ask you as, uh, Assistant Director of thee, if, if we do decide to table this, uh, we could table it, uh, for a period of time or until this document was created and signed off on or whatever, and then they could come back and then, you know, we wouldn't start the hearing again. They wouldn't have to file any additional-
Correct.
Pay any additional fees or anything like that. It would just be added to the docket of one of our normally hear, uh, normal hearings.
Correct.
And then we could consider, uh, at that point, you know, after looking at the document, you know, then if we come up with a motion to, you know, approve this or whatever, then we could do that and, but it wouldn't be any additional cost on them other than their cost to, to get that document drafted.
Correct, correct. We would still notify the adjoining property owners for the second hearing of where it's going to be removed from the table and you make a decision, but we'll take care of that. That's not an issue. But the, the applicant would not be on any additional fees.
Right, okay. All right, Mr. Hampton, anything else?
One second.
Okay. All right. Any additional questions before we move into final statement of the applicant?
Sir?
I haven't got you sworn in either. We need to get you, name and address.
Billy Hunley and I live on Shakermore Road. This is my, uh, stepson-
Hold it, hold on just a moment. Need to get you sworn in.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. I guess I got some questions and I don't want to seem contradictory, but with nobody agreeing, nobody taken care of, as it sounds like someone has said, if I lived there, why would I want to sign agreement to where it's going to bind me to something I'm not binding to now? They're not adding any more vehicles to this property because they already live here. They own this much of the property, they want to build here. All they're going to do is add a driveway. You're going to have to ask everybody that lives on this street to bind yourself to something you're kind of not binding to right now. Even though there's some form of agreement, nobody knows exactly what says or don't, you're going to hold off. They can't do it unless everybody agrees. And it's, it's, I mean, if you can understand what I'm trying to say is, nobody understands what the agreement is now. The only one had the issue is the guy at the end which has the most to gain. But yet, you're going to say, hey, unless everybody signs off, you can't have it. It's, and again, put yourself in my spot. If I lived right here, why would I want to sign off on something now that's going to bind me that I haven't been binding to this whole time? You know, and then here's the driveway goes to their house now. So, if they say no, can they, question, use that same driveway and extend it over to the other piece of their property to build a house on? You're not adding any more vehicles to it. They could take a picture of the roadway right now and guarantee in writing, they will put that roadway back the way it is before they start. Without anyone else signing off, hey, I'm going to start taking responsibility of this. I'm going to start taking responsibility of that. That's kind of what you're asking in a way. So-
Well, Mr. Hunley, they, you know, we have to, you know, counsel has advised us and then I think the commissioners, several commissioners have some concerns.
Sure, sure. And don't get me wrong, and I'm not trying to be negative about it, but I'm just saying, I'm sitting back here listening. There's agreement that kind of exists, that don't exist. No one up front's done this, that. The only person complaining, the guy at the end that has the most to gain. And, you know, all we're talking about is the driveway, not to add any more vehicles. You know, it's the same thing, it's there right this minute. Um, I do know the equipment they've had, they've tried to help maintain parts of the driveway, parts of the road. It is a private road and I understand the commission wants to look out for their residents, but it is a private road. And then outside of this, trying to get this, they kind of fight among themselves, not with the county, prior to asking for a driveway and approval to build. I mean, just kind of sitting back listening to the whole thing, you know? Again, this is more of a, a civil domestic thing. Until now, we want a driveway, the county gets involved. So, again, I'm just trying to picture all this, how, how it works and how it goes. But I appreciate you listening.
Thank you, sir. All right. Any additional questions before we move into the next portion of the hearing?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, Mr. Smith, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Oh, I'm, somebody spoke, I don't, oh, Mr. Douglas, I'm sorry, I did.
I, I just like for either Mr. Combs to clarify. This is a waiver for access easement section. And it, and in part of that easement section is to maintain the easement. It, it's not necessarily a permit or a waiver to, you know, encroachment permit for roadway. This is an easement section. And I'm not an attorney, but all we're asking for, who's going to maintain that easement? And the reason why we limit three tracks to an easement is so we're assured there's not going to be an excessive use of that easement. And we've heard testimony, yes, you're already living at the current residence. We've heard that. Next is who's going to maintain, maintain that easement. It, and it's not how many driveways are on there. It is proportionally because we limit three tracks to one easement. That's what we're looking at. That's what the waiver is for. Not, not private road or private anything else. It's an easement. So, I, I just think Mr. Combs ought to clarify that. If I hadn't clarified enough, or maybe somebody from the staff, but I think we're putting too much into this. So-
I don't think we're putting too much in it. In the past, we're just, I'm just telling you, it can, in the past, a condition of approval was placed on the, this track, these tracks stating that there will be a written agreement, maintenance agreement on the 30-foot access easement and it will be recorded in the county clerk's office. That was the- access easement, and it will be recorded in the county clerk's office. That was done on January 27, 2000. It was not done evidently, and as a result of that, we're here in this mess, basically, without anybody being responsible to do anything, and that creates a problem.
So I think-
Not just, not just for them, but for the, whoever buys this property in the future, otherwise it's just going downhill, in my opinion. I, I just think this has been required in the past. It's always been a condition, uh, for, for proving, uh, the, so many houses on an access easement, and, uh, so that's why it, it's a problem right now, and they're asking for a waiver, as I see this, to waive, um, the, let me see where I saw that. As a part of the condition here, this is, they're asking to either waive the, the maintenance agreement requirement, which, frankly, I, I don't think you can.
No, we're not asking that. I mean, they're not.
Where did I see that?
They're, they're asking for a waiver of the access, of section 5.7E, which says that they can only have three tracks to use an access easement. The other action is the approval of the minor plat.
There's always been no more than three tracks.
Correct.
And, and, and to have a maintenance agreement among those three property owners that are using that, that, that access easement, it's not a road, it's an access easement, and they're asking for a waiver to extend that. Now, yes, you have the authority to do that, but I think staff and everybody recognizes that maintenance aspect is, is critical.
Right, and if there was an existing maintenance, access and maintenance agreement in place, that would still have to be modified to add this additional property, and staff would still require that updated agreement signed by all parties at the time of minor plat.
Yeah, now, what she's saying is, if, if this has already been in place like it should have been for the three tracks, and we're approved a waiver to add an additional track, then we can condition it that they have to also join and be a part of the existing maintenance agreement and accept those terms before it can be granted.
Correct, correct, which is all part of the minor plat review process.
Mr. Douglas, is that all your questions, sir?
It is, and, I mean, I think, well, counsel has pretty much told us we have two options.
Right, yeah, and, and I think we're, you know, right now, we're still in the questioning of the applicant, so, you know, we'll get, we'll get to the point where we'll have a, you know, a motion or whatever, and then we can have open discussion, but is there any additional questions for the applicant at this time? Okay, seeing, seeing no hands, hearing no one, we will now move into the final statement of the applicant. Do any of you all have a final statement you would like to make before we close this hearing and then open it up for the commissioner to make, the commissioners to make a decision? Mr. Brady?
Like was stated before, when me and my father signed the paperwork for the property, there was a maintenance agreement for the road that, you know, we had to sign. Um, I was notified by also 10-11 that he had a maintenance agreement on his, uh, paperwork when he signed for his house, and I'm assuming everybody else did too, uh, for something that, you know, you got, that was something that was supposed to be done years ago that, you know, was never done, was obviously dropped by someone else. For us to do it, I mean, I don't have a problem with doing it, but like I said, it should have been done years ago, and obviously someone dropped a ball on that. That's all I have to say.
All right. Does that, anybody else have a final statement? Mr. Brady?
Uh, yes, so, I understand the concerns of, um, you know, making sure that there's a, a mutual agreement upon maintenance for those, those three dwellings, and, um, as I've stated several times, is that something that we will absolutely obtain, um, and I understand, Amy said, you know, that's something that if approved, you know, it, it's contingent on that binding document if that's returned to her, so that's absolutely something that I can, um, work very hard to obtain, um, if, you know, the chance is given, so, um, like I said before, um, we've, don't have any, any, um, anything bad between the neighbors or anything like that, so I feel, and absolutely referring back to that email from, um, 10-31, I understand what she's saying, so I feel like we wouldn't have an issue at all with coming up with some sort of maintenance agreement. I don't know what the maintenance agreement was previously, because I've, honestly, I've never seen it. I did know about it, but, and apparently it can't be found at all, so I don't know what happened with that, but still, there's, moving forward, my husband and I would absolutely sign that document, um, and, and speak with our neighbors about this, and make sure that it's, it's fair and that's communicated and thoroughly documented in that letter with the attorney, and, um, notarized and, and sent back to, to Amy. That's something that absolutely, if, if it's contingent upon today, I would absolutely start on that immediately and get that to you guys as soon as possible if, if you can let me.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right. Does that completes your all's final statements? Okay. All right, with that, uh, docket PZ 20015 is now closed, and as always, I will call on staff, which, Ms. Alvey, Mr. Urban had a, another meeting he had to get to at 10 o'clock, so I'll call on her to outline what's being requested here, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Combs to add anything that he would like to add.
Sir, what is before you today is a request for a minor plat, or a waiver of the access easement regulation to allow a fourth track to use an existing access easement. If, if you, so you have two options. You can either table this until the applicant comes back with a, uh, access and maintenance agreement that has been signed by all parties that would, that are affected by it, um, or you can make, well, I guess you have three. You have, or you can make a motion to approve the waiver to allow a fourth track to use the access easement with the, uh, conditions set in place, and then you would make a motion to move, to approve the minor plat for a two-acre track, or you can make a motion to deny.
Okay. All right. Mr. Combs, anything you'd like to add, sir?
It's been well stated.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, you've heard, uh, the outline of what's being requested under docket PZ 20015. What is the pleasure of the commission? I'd like to get a motion on the floor with a second, and then we'll open it up for discussion. Mr. Hampton?
I'll make a motion. We table this, uh, till the agreement, the, uh, agreement is made about the road. Uh, I have nothing against anything they're trying to do or anything else. Actually, I think this will protect them in the long run. It's not going to draw it out any. It's, I, I don't see any, I see it as really the, the most practical thing to do.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Combs, is that an adequate motion?
It is.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, Mr. King, seconds. Uh, motion to table is non-debatable, non-amendable, and comes to immediate vote, so, uh, we will, uh, I think we'll just do a voice vote on this, on this motion to table. So, um, all those in favor of the motion to table this until the access agreement is put in place or has been agreed to, and, uh, then we will bring it back to the commission, or remove it from the table, and then open it back up for discussion, at, but the hearing is, is closed, so we will not have any additional hearing or additional comments. We will just, at that point, make a decision. I just want everybody to understand what that motion to table is. So, it is non-debatable, and so, uh, all those in favor of the motion to table signify by saying aye. All opposed, no?
No.
Okay, we have two.
Raise your hand if you voted no.
Okay, well, let's, let's, let's start over, I'm sorry. Let's, let's go ahead and do, uh, just, uh, I'll have call on, uh, Ms. Hachi, and let's do a, a voice vote, like we normally do. Uh, go ahead with the vote, and this is a motion to table.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Clingefus?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
No.
Mr. Douglas?
No.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Ms. Nasser?
All right, the motion to table passes on a vote of six to four. So that, uh, you understand, and, and staff can provide you any additional information that you need, uh, you know, is what, what you need to do to, to come back then for us to consider this, uh, at a future date. So, with that, Commissioners, we do have, uh, one other item of business. Uh, Ms. Alvey, if you want to, uh, let us know what that is here.
Okay, so, we are asking for a correction to the, to the minutes from the 2013 docket, September 24th of 2013. Um, the minutes need to be corrected for a portion of Dogwood Estates, so the certificate of land use can be corrected and re-recorded. On pages 16 and 17 of the minutes, um, Jim Urban outlined the proposed binding elements, and number eight, he outlined reads, "Massy School Road will be widened from the intersection of Zale Smith Road south to the proposed subdivision entrance," which is correct. Uh, the actual findings and decisions section of the minutes says that Zale Smith Road will be widened from the pro, proposed entrance of Massey School Road, which is incorrect. Zale Smith and Massey School were flip-flopped in the finding portions of the minute, and that, and that section of the minutes is what is cut and pasted to put in the certificate of land use restrictions. Um, so when staff cut and paste that portion of it, and that was used for recording, it was recorded incorrectly based off the minutes. So we need to make a correction to the minutes to, for it to read, "Massey School Road will be widened from the intersection of Zale Smith Road," I'm sorry, yes, "from Zale Smith Road south to the proposed subdivision entrance." Look, let me get there. So, here is what Jim Urban outlined in the proposal. So, you know, at the end of the meeting, Jim always goes through and reads all of the proposed approvals, or, uh, conditions of approval. So Massey School will be widened from the intersection of Zale Smith Road south to the proposed subdivision entrance. And if you look at the bottom of that same page, under the findings and decisions, when the motion was made, it says, "Zale Smith Road is to be widened from the proposed entrance on Massey School Road," which is not the same, because it changes the perspective of what has to be widened as part of the approval process. So the certificate of land use restriction shows here, again, Zale Smith Road is to be widened from the proposed entrance on Massey School. So, I think this might just be extra copies that I had. So, this is the portion that we're speaking of, of where it was to be widened. So basically, we just need to correct the minutes so we can do a corrected certificate of land use restriction in the deed room.
Okay, Ms. Alvey, I, just one question. On, uh, the commissioners that were present, should that not have been Finley, not Finney?
Uh, where's that at?
Sam was not on the, the first page of certificate of land use restrictions, under the vote was as follows. Sam, I don't believe was on the commission at that time, Sam Finney.
What, what page are you on, Kevin?
Uh, Jenny, uh, Jay Hall.
Okay, you were, okay. Okay, I, I wasn't sure whether you were on at that point. We had a, you know, Mr. Finley, uh, from La Grange was on the commission.
Who?
Okay, never mind. Finley, uh, yeah, but anyway, okay, we're good, never mind.
That person's not been on there since I've been here, so.
Ms. Davis?
Turn your, your mic on.
You're asking us to prove something we weren't here for. Should we abstain from voting?
No, if you believe that the information has been presented correctly, then you would vote.
Okay, thank you.
Same thing on the minutes. If you weren't here for the minutes from the previous meeting, it's the same thing how you vote for that.
Mr. King?
Um, so, first question is, um, is this consistent with the recorded content from that hearing?
Yes, I went back, and it was.
Okay.
Yeah, because the, the motion was to adopt the, uh, binding elements as Mr., as stated by Mr. Urban.
Which is-
So that, that was the one through 10, but when the minutes were tight, it was typed incorrectly.
That's where I was going, okay? So I have my fingerprints on this.
Right.
Um, and it is in my nature to incorporate rather than restate
Yes.
those elements as they're, as they're read forth, so that, that is certainly the intent of the motion, uh, at the time, and, um, is something that I, I believe we should adopt. Now, if you're ready for a motion, I'll go ahead and do that.
Well, let me, let me see if there's any other questions or, or clarifications. Okay, the chair will now entertain a motion to, uh, on this, uh, request.
I'll move to incorporate this language as previously stated, sir, um, to, uh, correct the minutes to reflect the incorporation of, um, the reference number eight, "Massey School Road will be widened from the intersection of Zale Smith Road south to the proposed subdivision entrance."
Okay. Uh, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Combs, is that an adequate motion?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any discussion on the motion to correct these minutes on the certificate of land use restrictions? Okay, so, see any hands go up? Uh, we can probably do this by voice vote. All those in favor of the motion to correct the minutes on the certificate of land use restrictions, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Okay, minutes have been corrected. All right, Ms. Alvey, uh, do we have, uh, we know what we're going to have for next month yet, or?
Filing deadline is tomorrow, and you will have a meeting. You will have a zoning change and a subdivision plan at minimum.
Okay, and the date will be the same? We, we meet the, the fourth?
Correct.
Tuesday?
Correct.
Okay, November, all right. And, uh, Mr. McIntyre, you have, you want to talk about the comp plan?
Yes, sir. Uh, so as you all know, the SRC has approved, or well, SRC members know, uh, we are going to move forward with the comp plan, so that'll be before you next month for, uh, your review and, uh, approval, and that's all I have.
And that'll be on the website, so I'll send out a link to our, to the website that shows the draft copy.
And I would like to ask that Commissioners, you know, take a look, go through that. It's, it's a fairly substantial document. We've worked on it, you know, the SRC's worked on it a long time.
I believe it's 131 pages.
So, you know, it's going to take a little bit of time, but make sure you, you know, go through it. If you have any questions, you have any concerns or whatever, uh, that, you know, next, at our next meeting, we will consider that to be sent forward then from a recommend, with a recommendation from the commission to the legislative bodies in Oldham County. So, anything else, Ms. Alvey?
No.
Okay. With that, uh, it's about a little after 10:30, and so appreciate everybody coming out today, and we'll see you next month. We're standing adjourned.